Oh, God. I need a chair.
You've got to pay for sidewalk.
This is ridiculous.
You know, this is funny, Steve. Ryan, rip out.
He's got to lift his own sidewalk. Fix a tree.
Well, he's already done it.
He's already done it, yeah.
Well, I know he was working on something before he left, and I think that's the kind of the act of work.
Oh, Council Arnold, we moved you down one seat.
Oh, lucky dog.
I call the Fairview City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 15th, 2013 to order. Could you please call the roll?
Council Prom.
Here.
Council Creameyer.
Here.
Council Owen.
Here.
Council Quimby.
Here.
Council Arnold.
Here.
Council President Barton Mullins.
Here. Thank you. Would you all stand, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone to please turn off their electrical devices and their phones. The first order of business tonight is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Second. Thank you. Council Quimby moved, and Council Owen seconded. Next, is citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
I'm sorry.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay if it works out for you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items. I recognize Mayor Smith, please. Welcome.
My name is Patricia Smith. I live at 23825 Northeast Tree Hill Drive, and that's in Wood Village, and I'm the mayor there. I won't take up much of your time. Everybody that knows me likes, I like to keep my meetings short and sweet. So, I just wanted to try and get your help and get your cooperation. I think it's a new, a new time in our three cities' history where the three mayors are actually getting along and working together, and we need to have a collaboration of services with the city so that we can afford to do things we need to do. Gresham has things that they do, and they are totally different from what we do, totally different part. We're in the, in the waterfront region, almost in the gorge, and, and we're different than Gresham, so we can't do things the same way. Plus, we're poorer than Gresham, so we've got to stick together. I have talked to the mayors, and they asked me to come before the councils, and I'm doing that now, to collaborate on an economic development position. The three of us alone can't afford one, and we need to have one. We can't have somebody volunteering part-time on this. This needs to be a full-time job. And I've put together some things, actually, I lied, I didn't put this together. My city administrator did, Bill. He's really good with numbers, and I'm not. But I am going to be in with the Troutdale Council also. My council is behind this. I'm going to give you costs of hiring a full-time economic developer for the three cities, working just for the three cities, nobody else. And so, with your permission, I'd like to hand these out. If you have any questions of me, I can try to answer them. But this is something I believe we need really badly to get our cities pumped and going in a good direction, business-wise, residential-wise, all the way. So, if you have any questions, I'll answer them, and I'll pass these out. I would really appreciate if maybe you could get a, get a session together and just go over this and see how it would work for you.
Any questions?
Just a question. I mean, what are you doing today from an economic development standpoint? Do you actually have staff that do that?
What are we doing? Nothing.
So, you have no staff?
Pretty nothing, yeah. We've been using the Columbia Gorge Chamber, and that's about it.
Okay.
No, we don't, we don't have anybody.
Okay.
Troutdale has the city administrator, and do you guys have anybody?
City administrator.
See? And that's a full-time job, and so is economic developer.
So, the Columbia Gorge, because has that been, I mean, how would you rate that? I mean, has that worked for you?
The Columbia Gorge Chamber?
Yeah.
They brought, the economic developer there has brought business to Wood Village. I, I, I know that. But what our plan is here is to have the three city administrators get together and decide who to hire as our three cities' economic developer. They will have an office wherever we want them to. I know you guys have office space. Troutdale doesn't have any. Wood Village has some, but that person in that position would be working for three cities.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. And go ahead and ask those out if you'd like.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, the next one I have is James Morrell. Please state your name and your address, and we'll put you on three minutes, please.
James Morrell. I live at 7630 Ridgewood Drive in Gladstone, 97027. I'm here tonight. I've been here before, and I don't want to be here again, but out of necessity, here we are, so. We have the property down on the north side of Depot Street from 5th to 7th. It's been just short of, we, we could have got it to recording, but due to economic conditions, we were advised to hold tight and try to wait that out, which is what we've done. Where we're at right now is, this is promising as it's looked, well, since 2000, end of 2007, early '08, when it started looking a little gloomy. We are actually being advised by the same people that told us to tread water that this might be time to move forward, but what we need is, is a little more time, one last extension. We really feel confident that we'll be moving dirt this year. We have people who are interested in loaning us the money, which isn't something I could have told you when I was here last year, and that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell. Any questions? Council Owen?
I guess I have a question maybe for Alan. Is this, you had earlier today had distributed an email. Is this the matter that you had advised? Okay, got it. Okay, thanks.
Council Quimby?
I didn't get a chance to see the email, but I kind of got a little bit of background information prior to our work session before council, and it seems like you were asking for another six-month extension on this.
Yes. Initially, in our letter that we wrote, we asked for 12, because I didn't, I didn't realize we could go six or 12. And then last night, in my testimony, I stated that we really needed a matter of months. We didn't necessarily need a whole year.
Okay, so you're comfortable with six months at this time?
I am. Of course, the more time, the better. But our aspirations are to have this all sorted out by August, have it done.
With that in mind, I'd like to move to have council grant him a six-month extension.
I'd second that, if that's acceptable.
Sam?
I'm sorry, I was just verifying with every, who's talking, the city attorney. We, if you are supportive of us presenting that to the planning commission and taking that through that process, we can do that, but we do need to go through that additional process in order to, to make that happen.
So, we can go ahead and move?
As long as you're supportive of that, it will be, we will move forward with the planning commission on that.
Okay, it was moved by Council Quimby and seconded in by Council Owen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'm sorry. Council Arnold, did you go?
Well, yeah, I had my light on, and I.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to this. Apologize.
Wow, that happens so quickly.
Guys got to really pay attention with me. Go ahead.
So, my question was, and it's a mute point at this point, but I haven't, I've been at work all day, so I haven't seen any emails, and I wasn't privy to the conversation, and I'm afraid I don't know who you are, and I have no idea what it is that you're asking.
And you are one of the few unfamiliar faces up there right now? What we're asking for is another six months before we record our final plat. Actually, it won't, wouldn't be six months before we actually do it. Guess I'm not exactly sure how to respond to your question. When we went through the whole process initially, and we re-divided the property to create 10 lots, we got it as far as all the engineering is done. One more sit-down with Linda for the public works part of it, and we should have our final approval, and at that point, we just go to Multnomah County, and we've already deposited the money there. It's been there for several years, and just have them finalize it, and at that point, we can apply for permits back here with you guys and actually create 10 building lots on the north side of Depot Street.
Okay.
It's been undeveloped, as far as I know, since they tore down whatever train station was there at one point.
Okay, thank you.
Council Arnold, if we don't go ahead and approve, then he'll have to come back and reapply and pay all the fees again.
So, this, and it's already been extended twice, but we, as a council, voted on that,
and so now he's just asking for an addition.
And in the letter, that I believe Alan has copies of, and he's going to share with you, those of you who didn't get to see it yet, there are two other developers in a very similar situation to us, whose plots were approved at the same period of time, and this is only according to what Lindsay was speaking last night. It only applies to the three of us who have outstanding plots that were approved in '08 and '09, I think it is, or '07 and '08.
Okay. Great, thank you. Appreciate the background information.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Jeff Anderson.
Thank you, Council.
Please state your name and address.
Jeff Anderson, 1465 Northeast Village Street, Fairview, 97024. I'm here before you today to discuss the situation of the sidewalks on Village Street. I know we have sidewalk issues in Fairview, but we feel that the Village situation is highly unique. As we review, the situation is far beyond reasonable and ordinary, and that the situation we have on Village Street is a result of trees and conditions that are not compatible for the application. This is, like I said, a unique situation. It's a combination of improper trees and overly compacted sidewalks, and it's fortunately, it's contained to Village Street. We have a 15-foot sidewalk that's different than anything else. The usage of Village Street is extraordinary to anything else in Fairview as well. Another thing I think I need to clarify is that there was a lawsuit, and the city did participate in payment of a lawsuit from a slip and fall on the sidewalk. We have done work with, we've done work with some contractors and arborists to take a look and see what can be done, what their recommendations are. We presented some of those to you. The property owners of Village Street are united on this issue. We're frustrated. Village Street has had its issues in the past, whether it be with parking or signage or whether we're mixed use or whether or not. It's been one thing after another, quite honestly, and, and it's frustrating, you know, and I think you can probably hear my voice, and that, it's just frustration coming out. And this situation isn't something that we're looking to get a handout. We're not looking for the city to say, hey, okay, we're going to pay for these trees. We just want to be clear that this situation is, was brought on by the, the choice of the city of what trees could go in and compaction and how it was done. When we buy these properties, we make the assumption that we have a proper tree and proper compaction, and it will function. If this was a situation of a couple of little problems here, a couple of little problems here, we wouldn't be here asking for remedy. This is an epidemic, and some of that epidemic was brought on by no fault of ours. So, we're asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any questions? Council Creameyer?
I just have a question for Samantha or Paul. If you could address the lawsuit issue that Jeff brought up, just to kind of bring us up to speed, because I don't know anything about that.
I believe that happened about two years ago. It was a year and a half to two years ago, I believe. I'd have to look at the date specifically. Lady tripped and fell and did file a lawsuit against the city as well as the property owner, and our insurance company settled with that person for $2,000 for injuries sustained in the trip.
Counsel, in large measure, when you have these, what they call slip and fall cases, oftentimes when your insurance carrier, in this case, it would be CIS, which is the insurance carrier that covers most municipalities and counties in Oregon, they do it almost as a business matter. I mean, they basically say there's a, there's a certain cost, which is going to be a certain fixed cost in terms of contesting these cases, and they would rather than just end the, end that and never get to liability issues or any of those sorts of things, they just, if they can, they try to settle the case as expeditiously and as inexpensively as they possibly can. So, the fact that a case was settled, there was probably no admission, there's no admission of liability or anything like that. So, I mean, you shouldn't look at it, I guess, the end, the endpoint I wish to make is that it has no precedential value. Yes, there was, there was a slip and fall, and yes, the case was settled, but it has no other, it has no impact on anything else. In turn, if you recall what I said during the work session, the selection of the trees was done as part of an overall plan for, for this area fair. And that is what, that was done consistent with existing law at the time, and was a discretionary decision on the part of the council. And as such, the choice of the trees as part of that overall plan was, was it, was, is essentially immune from any liability. The city is not at risk of being at fault, and so there's other, there's other public policy issues that you may want to address as to how to address this problem, but as I said during the work session, your decision should not be driven by any concept of liability.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Next, we have Garth Everhart.
Garth Everhart, 954 Northeast Clear Creek Way. Madam President and councilors, I'm asking to speak a little bit on the street trees, just to throw my two cents in, I guess, as I build a lot of the streets and sidewalks. A little bit of history is, the tall trees on Village Street in particular were picked because as the original design of this project, we had a street, a vision of Village Street that had tall, two and a half, three-story buildings, and so columnar trees were picked for this street. So, you look down the street, the street has very different trees than the other phases. The other phases have more bulbous trees and street, trees, trees, street trees that cover, you know, create a canopy over the street. So, as Barry mentioned, there was a lot of thought given to tree shapes to fit the architecture. The, but the, the arborists assured us, you know, this whole schrepp process that we were picking, we had seven species for the village. There were all supposed to be beetles and all that kind of stuff. I think the problem happens when the arborists aren't aware of how you build subdivisions. In the case of Fairview Village or Fairview or Village Street in particular, there's 15 feet of sidewalk, which is the design all the way down, all the way over to Dan's Bank, and it would go all the way around, and it's going to go all the way to Halsey eventually. That 15-foot profile goes all the way to Halsey and, and extends out almost to Target on one side and Marketplace parts on the other side. So, the other thing about those is there's a lot of utilities. That's one of the big problems for the compaction. Each one of those row houses with a 20-foot frontage has a sewer line, a stormwater line, potentially a second stormwater line, and a water line. So, in 20 feet of frontage, you have at least three utility lines, and they can't be stacked. You can't stack water over sewer. So, that's one of the reasons that the compaction got so great in those sidewalks, plus the city code requires compaction. I mean, literally, the rideaway inspector comes out there and takes a piece of rebar or whatever, and if it's not stiff, you know, he can't pound something into it. You have to recompact it before you pour the concrete. So, what they do now is they drill trees in. So, in a situation like this, you come out with a tree drill, and you drill down three or four feet, you get past the lens of compaction. But in the mid-'90s, late-'90s, you know, we didn't have the experience for this, because Village Street was one of those first projects that had, you know, sidewalks right up to front doors and all these kinds of things, so it's just, it's an unfortunate occurrence. But it's important to understand that there was a design review for each phase, it required the street trees, the engineering required compaction, all those kinds of things. I like what you were saying, Steve, about some middle ground, and what I've suggested to people is some kind of reimbursement program. If the city does it, it will be a lot more expensive than if the private sector does it, if the homeowners do it. And I've contemplated an idea that maybe the city comes out, marks three or four squares, marks it, sends a letter to the property owner, say, you have, you have 90 days to replace this. We've measured it, it's 100 square feet. Our reimbursement rate is like five bucks a square foot, because there's a lot of small concrete masons that will come out and lift three or four panels. We've been seeing it in Phase 1 and Phase 2 already, and these aren't 10-yard trucks. If you call somebody like C-Mex, they'll send out a 10-yard truck, but nobody does sidewalks like that when you need repairs. You know, you've seen those little toe-behind concrete trucks, those little concrete trailers? That's how these guys do it. They do it for a living. And so, if you, if you go to the private group and say, you know, you need, you've got 90 days to do this, we're going to reimburse you X dollars per square foot. We've measured it, we've marked it. When it gets done, we'll come inspect it, and we'll cut you a check, and they'll be sharing the cost, and then the city's sharing the cost. I think that might take that $500,000 number, it might shrink it considerably and show us goodwill and recognition that the city does have a role in it, because it's, it's always fascinated to me that this is the one thing that the city owns but requires it to be privately maintained. I mean, we literally stop at the curb. You have to, you have to, you have to maintain the sidewalk and the planting strip and the street tree, but once we get to the curb, we'll take care of it. It's, it's just, it's one of those things that a long time ago, the city started pushing expenses off on private landowners. So, I, as a private landowner, you bear that burden, but you don't really have any ownership, which is an odd, an odd situation. So, with respect to new trees going in, you know, I've talked to Alan a long time ago about this in, in Old Town, if they start a tree program, I would like to suggest that the city have the holes drilled, require the landscaper. And they all have the trailers, and they have the 24-inch drill bits, they drill down three or four feet. That will loosen the soil up, then if the tree gets set correctly, the roof should go down, because this, this was very unforeseen, and it is, it is a problem. I am not in favor of pulling those trees out. We've been replacing sidewalks in Phase 1, and Portland replaces sidewalks all the time. They don't tear out trees. What I would suggest is we replace trees, and maybe in Village Street, put in some tree grates. The tree, those iron tree grates the city department uses, they use those because they can lift them up and break a section off as the tree gets bigger. So, maybe, Dan, like you're talking about, in lieu of a planting strip, we widen that area around that tree and break, put in some break-up grades. And I just, I kind of, as the builder, and put all the trees and sidewalks in, I just kind of wanted to clarify how we got to where we are today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Everhart. Any questions?
I have a question.
Council Owen?
As, I think somehow we communicated earlier, I think, so when you pull the tree out, I mean, is it going to be possible to actually plant another tree in that particular area, or is it going to be advisable to move one way or the other?
The tree saws come off, the stump grinders can't, they can't grind more than about a foot or maybe six, eight inches below, because otherwise you start tearing up the concrete around it, because the grinders, if you've ever seen those big grinders?
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're like a big chainsaw that lowers down and chips away at that stuff. You'd have to move the trees over, which is a problem, because we ended up having to add electrical. Each one of those tree wells on Village Street has not only an irrigation hub, but they also have a quick cover so you can wash the front of your building off. Plus, Maryland had us add in all those traillets for the, for the Christmas lights. So, there's a, as Alan said, there's a whole lot of stuff in that tree hole.
Yeah.
That's one reason not to get rid of the trees.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds very complex, I mean, especially in a very tight area like you're talking about out there, so, okay.
Not something I'd want to do.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Everhart. All right, thank you, people. Next is city administrator and director reports.
Good evening. Mayor, Councilor, so, Mayor, Mayor's here, Presiding Officer, Council President. I just have a few brief updates. Council, I just wanted to let the citizens know, we do have our events page is live on the city website now. If, if citizens go to fairvieworegon.gov and click on our community, there'll be a drop-down screen, and one of the choices will be events. This is an evolving page. This is just the preliminary page. As we gather more information from neighboring cities and jurisdictions, we will be adding events to this as well, so. But I did want you to know, it is live, so people can take a look at that. Reminder that 12 Mile Spring Cleanup is next week. You are, citizens that use 12 Mile, allowed to have equivalent of five 30-gallon trashcans free of charge on your regular trash day, but that is next week, so please remember that if you are interested in partaking in that. Other than that, that is all I have for you today. Oh, one last thing. We also had a concern about, with farmers market, we require the 48-hour notice for the no-parking signs, and, and Peter's doing a fantastic job at complying. We are in the process of ordering signs that will be nice signs that will be able to be utilized by folks who, like Chili, Chili on the Green, or East County Byte, any of those groups will be able to utilize those. So, we're in the process of ordering those. I did want you to know that we are working on that, so we'll, we'll have some more attractive signs out there. And I believe Chief Johnson has a presentation for you.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President, councilors. I apologize to you this evening. As you know, traditionally, I do not bring prepared remarks. Tonight, I have prepared some remarks because the topic is so important to me that I want to make sure that I get it right. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. National Police Week 2013 began Sunday, May 12th, and will continue through this Saturday, May 18th. And today, as I mentioned, it is National Police Officers Memorial Day. September 11th, 2001, forever changed this nation when we were brutally attacked by terrorists. Then, the tragic terrorist attack at the Boston Marathon. Those horrific events have helped all of us realize that fighting terrorism is not just the duty of our military. Dedicated local, state, federal police officers, deputy sheriffs, and state troopers risk their lives every day to keep our homeland safe and secure. As the immediate past president of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, I urge all citizens to join me during this year's National Police Week to honor fallen officers and their families. You can honor them by pausing for a moment of silence or by telling an officer how much you appreciate what they do to keep all of us safe. In conclusion, as the chief of police for the city of Fairview, I would like to extend a special thank you to the dedicated men and women of the Fairview Police Department. As they sit in the back room, I tell you-
go to fairvieworegon.gov and click on "Our Community," there'll be a drop-down screen. One of the choices will be "Events." This is an evolving page. This is just the preliminary page. As we gather more information from neighboring cities and jurisdictions, we will be adding events to this as well. So, but I did want you to know, it is live, so people can take a look at that. Reminder that 12 Mile Spring Cleanup is next week. You are, citizens that use 12 Mile, allowed to have equivalent of five 30-gallon trash cans free of charge on your regular trash day, but that is next week. So, please remember that if you are interested in partaking in that. Other than that, that is all I have for you today. Oh, one last thing. We also had a concern about, with Farmers Market, we require the 48-hour notice for the no parking signs. And Peter's doing a fantastic job at complying. We are in the process of ordering signs that will be nice signs that will be able to be utilized by folks who, like Chili, Chili on the Green, or East County Byte, any of those groups will be able to utilize those. So, we're in the process of ordering those. I did want you to know that we are working on that, so we'll have some more attractive signs out there. And I believe Chief Johnson has a presentation for you.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President. Counselors, I apologize to you this evening. As you know, traditionally, I do not bring prepared remarks. Tonight, I have prepared some remarks because the topic is so important to me that I want to make sure that I get it right. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day and the calendar in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. National Police Week 2013 began Sunday, May 12, and will continue through this Saturday, May 18. And today, as I mentioned, it is National Police Officers' Memorial Day. September 11, 2001 forever changed this nation when we were brutally attacked by terrorists. Then, the tragic terrorist attack at the Boston Marathon. Those horrific events have helped all of us realize that fighting terrorism is not just the duty of our military. Dedicated local, state, federal police officers, deputy sheriffs, and state troopers risked their lives every day to keep our homeland safe and secure. As the immediate past president of the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, I urge all citizens to join me during this year's National Police Week to honor fallen officers and their families. You can honor them by pausing for a moment of silence or by telling an officer how much you appreciate what they do to keep all of us safe. In conclusion, as the Chief of Police for the City of Fairview, I would like to extend a special thank you to the dedicated men and women of the Fairview Police Department. As they sit in the backroom, I tell you, please know that you are respected, honored, and appreciated. Finally, to those who have lost loved ones, to the family members and friends that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, words seem so inadequate. From the bottom of our heart, we say thank you. We are thinking about you and your sacrifices, and we hold them dear to our hearts. And I would just like to say that last week, I had the honor of representing the Governor's Office with the others on the Law Enforcement Medal of Honor Commission as we presented three Medals of Ultimate Sacrifices to the families of police officers here in Oregon in the last couple of years that have given the ultimate sacrifice, some of them friends of mine. And it was heartwarming and emotional, and it happened to take place on my dad's birthday. So, May 7, for the first time in the history of the state, we gave Medal of Ultimate Sacrifices to three families. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I just want to say thank you, and thank you to all the men and women of Fairview Police Department. I just think you guys are the greatest. I really, really do. Thank you for being there. Anybody else? Counsel Prom.
Well, I was going to save this for Counselor comments, but this seems like a good segue. This last week, I had the opportunity to witness some proactive police work from Officer Dele Torre. He was actually, he came across a homeless pregnant woman who was actually using one of, another one of the Counselor's businesses to charge their cellphone. And I was impressed with his professional response with her and able to potentially help her get some resolution to her problems and maybe help her out socially, too. So, I was impressed with his professionalism, and I think that's great. Not only, yeah, I want to say, not only adding the fifteenth police officer, which we just did for the safety of the officers, but I think we're also making our city safer for all our citizens. So, thank you, Chief.
And thank you for bringing that to my attention. I forwarded that email on, and it will go in his personnel file as well. We always hear negative. It's so awesome when we can hear positive remarks as well, and I make sure the officers get those.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks to all the guys.
And we have one brief update from Public Works Director, Alan Berry.
Chief, I know this isn't about what you were talking about, but I did mean, I wanted to report some graffiti underneath the underpass. It's a gang. It says number or pound sign, and then something gang. I can't remember the name of the gang, but that needs to get passed on and taken care of. No. Thank you so much. All right.
Well, I've never seen so many police at one city council meeting. I thought maybe there was like a warrant or something for Counselor Kremeyer.
[laughing]
I wasn't really sure what was going on tonight.
See, I thought they came from Park, because they came in right behind him.
I heard, started racing up here a little bit, actually.
Would it take five people?
Good evening, Council President. That was a council. Just a quick update. You're going to see at the next council meeting, the Sign Code. Before you, once again, there were some issues raised by the city attorney with regard to content-based signage, which will be clarified in those modifications. Nothing that affects the code. We've actually done some outreach to people that participated in it, and I think everyone is pretty comfortable. The next one is, it's getting to that time of year. Last year, the Falopa people would like to schedule their presentation of the budget. And then following that, I mean, he asked me to give you advance notice. They would like to host a tour of the lake to show you what it looks like, the issues that they see on all sides of the lake. Last but not least, just to remind you, we do have a person working half-time on economic development, Erica. And quite frankly, we push it really hard. And just to remind you, we've added several businesses this past year. We've been quite successful. A hundred-plus jobs going to be in the Townsend Business Farms, and we've got other ideas underway as well. So, I just want to make sure you, you know, remember that we're alive and well, and we do exist. Thank you. If you've got any questions, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Well, last year, I think it was last year, former Counselor Cooper, the mayor, and I went on that tour with Falopa. And they took us all around the lake. They had wine and food, and just treated us like royalty. That was a wonderful trip around, things that I had never seen and wasn't aware of. So, I really encouraged us at the council to take that sightseeing tour that's offered to you. Counselor Kremeyer.
I just had one thing to add to Alan's comments. One of the other things that the EDAC Committee is doing and working on with Alan and Erica also was the Mayor's Roundtable, which, you know, we're doing on a quarterly basis for economic development, trying to build a cohesive business community within the city limits of Fairview. And I think it's been a great program, so, yeah.
Any other questions? I don't see any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, next up is Mayor Committee Report and Council Comments. I think tonight, we're going to start with Counselor Arnold.
All I have to report on this evening is I did attend a ASAC meeting. Don't make me say that twice. I can't guarantee that I'll be able to say it again. It was a great meeting. They ran through some policy stuff. And I forgot to mention at our last meeting that Sherry Fox Haynes was elected as the chair for the group, which was a great selection. And at my, at our last meeting, I did mention to the group that the group had some concerns. And they asked me for guidance. And so, I'm going to kind of throw it back again. I'm going to volley it back to the council, is perhaps we come back to the committee and answer the questions that they had needed clarification on, because they feel that they need that in order to move forward. They're a bit unsure as to really what their role is with regards to events. So, that's important. Perhaps we could make that a work session and work on that upcoming for them. And then, they are charged. Sherry left the meeting with encouraging every member to bring back a vision and event ideas and keep it realistic. And they're going to present some potential events for the city. So, it's a great group. Of course, just note that there is still three positions that are available on the committee. And if there's anyone in our viewing audience that is interested, please contact the city, because we'd love to have your input. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Quimby.
I've just got a couple, Alan, before you leave. Saw you trying to sneak out of here. I don't know if Sam can answer this one or if you need to be involved. I'll start with that one. The ETA on the zone change request for the waterfront development? I haven't heard anything about that for months. Is there an estimated time of how long this is going to be?
Funny you should say that. We actually have talked about this at Planning Commission before, and then again last night. I actually met, I went over and talked with one of the folks over at the waterfront as well today. The Planning Commission would like to do basically a master plan for that area. And we're talking about maybe it should have a holding zone over all the properties so that it would protect, and I'm getting ahead of myself, because we haven't even talked about this outside of commission, a holding zone to protect the rights of the existing properties, you know, Georgia Pacific, Landco, Metro. So, in other words, you could do the riverfront and/or maintain what they've got. So, with this idea of doing this master planning effort, quite frankly, where we are now, we're moving along with, we've started to move along with what we want. But the big question was, is should we really be dictating to whoever is going to develop that property specifically what it should look like? Or should we have a master planning effort that works for the people that own the property, the people that surround it, including, say, the Port of Portland, who have the property to the south, include Metro, because they have the Chinook Land in there. I know Samantha's had some ideas on how that should work. And so, that's where we're up to right now. If we do it, and then one little add-on to that, this discussion I was having today is, if you're going to do a master plan of that area, should you start by finding out what would work from an economic development standpoint? Or should you do your master plan and see if that plan meets your economic development goals? And we were going round and round a little bit about that, you know, which, is it a chicken and an egg thing? You know, do we analyze what works and then see how to put the different pieces on that property? So, that's where we're at. But we are moving. The Planning Commission thought last night that it would be overall a six-month process to come, if we went that route.
I'm a little confused now, because a year ago, I saw drawings that the development company had made up already that showed condos, hotel, restaurant, dock with gasoline facilities, that type of stuff. Now, you're talking about a master plan in six months from now?
Well, what they told, if you look at the properties, I think this is to do, this is to truly do a riverfront so that you would encompass all those properties, not just the one that is occupied by where more excavation are actually living now. It would be to do a riverfront that encompassed the whole area.
Is that something that's going to upset or interfere with whatever property lines?
You know, like I said, I had very preliminary talks today, and I've heard no negatives so far. It actually creates more flexibility for the folks. You could actually go and, you could do that on that one, on the Landco piece and wait. Or you could include, like I said, whether Georgia Pacific would be interested in joining in that fray. But this would give everybody the opportunity to be a partner in developing what should go out there. But that's what, that was from Planning Commission last night.
Are they aware of the plan that was done for the Landco property a year ago? I mean, it seems like they're reinventing the wheel that was done a year ago, and they're going to bog the process down. And all they're asking for is a land zone change for their area. I mean, I can understand wanting to take a big look at the whole thing, but...
No, we're looking at the code, not a, you know, if Landco wanted to request the zoning change to do that, then that's a different, that's not the process. That we're looking at creating a riverfront that encompasses that all area, so that if they wanted to do it, it would be available.
I might be confused then. What zone change was requested?
Right now, we've got, we're not doing it. We're doing a code for what would be allowed on a riverfront property. That's where it went with Planning Commission.
So, has there been a formal request for a land zone change?
No, not from, that's what I'm saying. It would be very difficult for us to change the zone of the property for, say, an example, a property owner without them actually asking for it to be done.
Okay, I guess I was...
Is that going to complete an application filed by Landco?
I didn't, I don't know the status of any of it. So, I guess I incorrectly assumed that there was a application in already.
No.
No, okay.
You would have seen it by then, because there's a 120-day rule. I mean, if you have a completed application in, there has to be a final decision made by the local governing body, by the local body within 120 days. So, there hasn't been a completed application.
Okay.
So, there's no application pending in front of the Planning Commission or anybody else for that matter.
Yeah, I think it felt very positive from the Planning Commission. And the preliminary indications from the people involved is that I think the direction is positive. I think what will come out of it is at least a plan that you'll be able to look at. Like I said, the big thing is what you have to be careful of is, do you tell people what they should have? Or should you engage an economic analyst to say, "This is what you need," and then make sure that fits in with the vision? The Planning Commission are quite clear that they do want the city to participate in what goes on on the riverfront. They felt quite strongly that, you know, it should be the riverfront, not just one piece. And of course, with the partners, if we do this, get this together, we'd want to make sure we engage everyone that's got a stake in this. And we were talking today about, we'd want Monrova County to be at the table. We want Metro to be there. We'd like Georgia Pacific to be there. Landco to be there. The Port of Portland to be there. The Drainage District to be there, so we get this thing lined up now.
Yeah, that was something that I mentioned a couple months back, too.
Yeah, I know, I know. And we've had them together once, but not in terms of, it's coming together, I think, at least in terms of something for people to look at.
Okay. Something else, and I'm not sure if you were here yet or not, but in recent years, the city paid a consultant to come out and look over the entire east end here and say what kind of businesses we needed, and turned in a report. And Sam, I don't know if you're familiar with that? So, that might be something. And like I said, it's right about the time you came here, I think. I didn't know if you were involved in that or not, but...
No, I've heard of, I know what it is.
You might want to take a look at that, because we spent a lot of money having this guy come out and say, "This is the kind of businesses that you need here."
You know, it seems as though with this particular development, we'll need to get really, we need to make sure that this code is prepared to deliver something that's viable and works for everyone. So, I know that sounds like a long time, but I actually thought, I was surprised that it was that short, because, you know, there were a lot of obstacles we've talked about down there. And I think by getting everybody together and working it through, I think we can come up with at least what is desirable down on the water.
Ken, do you mind if I ask a question really quick? I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm just curious, you know, with the Planning Commission, you know, taking into consideration what could potentially be good or bad uses for the property down there? You know, are we as a city, or they, you know, we had Leland and Associates come in and give us a presentation, you know, regarding the Ranger project and the whole waterfront development down there. Are we going to look at, you know, contracting out with like Leland or somebody like that, so the Planning Commission can see what the vision is, you know, from a big perspective, so we can maximize the value of that property down there and turn it into a marquee location for East County? Not that I want to say that the Planning Commission can't do a good job, but I mean, if we can bring in a consultant that that's what they do on big projects and has a big vision, I think it behooves us to spend the time and spend the money to look at doing something like that, you know, so that way we can have the crown jewel of East County right here in Fairview.
And that's that chicken and the egg thing. Do you want to, do you look at it as to what really pencils out, you know, economically and then make that fit? Or do you say what you'd like to see and then tweak it from what, it's which way you come at it? We were talking about it. Whether it's Leland or someone else, or whether it's that existing report, we certainly need to look, we need to make sure that we're, we don't want to come up with a plan for that that doesn't work for, and obviously, for the people that own the property, that, I mean, they're going to want something that pencils out for sure, I would assume.
I think the report that was done was just a survey of what types of businesses or amenities were needed, and we might want to take a look at. Counselor Kremeyer suggested, Leland Associates have been involved in that particular area already and probably are halfway, if not all the way there, as far as what would pencil out for...
Yeah, Leland were engaged by Metro to work on the connections plan. So, they crawled all over East County. I know that. I know he does that kind of thing. You know, he's done a lot of economical studies, I mean, all over the place. And that's certainly one company to look at. Like I say, it depends. Do you want to... one company to look at. Like I say, it depends. Do you want to, do you look at what you want or do you look at what the amenities you think the city need and see how to make them pencil out? And that's the conversation. And like I say, we chit-chatted this after Planning Commission today, had a couple of conversations with a couple of folks, and that's as far as it's got so far.
I guess I would reiterate that, not to say the Planning Commission will do a bad job, but what the city wants, what the Planning Commission wants, may not be what will work or may not be what the developers want. So it might be best to take a look at that all at once.
Absolutely.
And it might be that somebody like Leland, who's already been all over this, is a good person to bring into the Planning Commission and they can sort this out.
The Planning Commission are very excited about developing this plan. And they are also concerned that whatever that plan looks like needs to reflect what the person that's actually developing it would like to do. You know, they're sensitive about pushing it down. The person stroked, I think, like I say, I think, I don't think there are any negative comments. I actually, it felt good today.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes, we can certainly, the Planning Commission, as part of their work, can make a recommendation to council for the master planning process. And if they are interested certainly in bringing in a group like Leland to come in and provide a master planning kind of report, they can make a request to council or recommendation for council to budget for that. And we can pursue that certainly as part of that master planning process so that we develop, what we're working on now, it's a two-part process. We're going to develop a zone code to put into our code for the waterfront. Once that is complete, any of those properties could then submit a full application to have their individual properties rezoned. So the first step is to get the zone developed to put into our code. And there was a preliminary example or put one that is put together for us by the developer, and that is what the commission is working off of initially right now at this time. So we will certainly present the willingness of council to support a master planning process and determine a plan around that and come back to you with some requests for funding if we need that.
How long do you think that process will take?
We'll need to put, Alan and I will need to meet and put a discussion together and we'll need to take that back to Planning Commission.
You mean to get Leland or someone like that?
Okay.
I mean, for them to do, you know, that's probably quite quick.
All right, thank you.
So everything would fit into your six-month plan?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would fit into the six-month plan.
We could also pursue a joint council meeting with the Planning Commission as well and do a special meeting along that line as we move forward with this project as well.
Councilor Owen, did you want to?
No, I think I'm okay. Thanks.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will continue with-
I still have one more.
You have more, okay.
Being, I am the council liaison to-
Just a second. Alan, your glasses are up here.
I'm just asking where my glasses went.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, I used these up, no.
Go ahead.
Councilor Owen can testify that they lose them easily. This might be a little bit early for this, just preliminary thoughts, since I'm the Parks Committee liaison and we're budgeting this year for Park Leon Master Plan Update. I'm already thinking ahead to this riverfront development and wondering, maybe, and like I said, this may be too early until we figure out what we're going to have up there, but I'm thinking, gee, how much money can we get for system development charges for parks? And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Let's head the other way. Councilor Prom.
I have nothing more this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Kraymeyer.
Let's have a couple things. First thing is the Fairview Business Association that's putting on the BITE event on August 10th. We had a meeting with the Graphic Arts Department up at Reynolds High School, and they have agreed to have the graphic arts students up there put together, or putting together a logo contest for the students up there. The seminals, I think, were due by today, and they were really excited about working with our organization. The students were really excited about looking, working for it, and whatever logo we go with, most likely, we'll go with that indefinitely if they come up with something really good. So it's going to be a feather in their cap and it's going to be a great thing for them to utilize in a work portfolio for them in the future going forward. So just as a community outreach piece on that event. The only other thing I have is, I think that, I just wanted to correct Councilor Owen, actually, the police officers weren't here for me. They were here to present you with your red, red light camera violation. So they didn't know how you were going to react to that, so they wanted to have some strength in numbers.
Do you get one of those? Are you done?
Well-
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Owen.
And actually with that, I had a whole list of things this evening, but now I'm speechless, so I will pass this evening. Thank you.
All right. As far as I'm concerned, I've been to several meetings and I'll just list real quick. I have been MCTUC and EMI's board meeting. I'm now on the board of EMI. And I've been to JPAC. I don't have any presentations about those ready for tonight, so, anyway. So we're done with that. Let's go on now to presentations. We have Rich Gohin and Julie. And I'm sorry, Julie, I will not try your last name. Good evening. I have, before you start, Mr. Gohin, I have a little birdie in my ear and I hear that you are celebrating 16 years with this commission. That is absolutely fabulous.
Well, it's not quite as long as I've lived in Fairview, but it's, time is passing.
We appreciate every second you've given to it for the last 16 years. That's great.
I moved to the Fairview area in 1962, and time does fly.
1996.
I've enjoyed working with the people of Fairview. I have never sat in your position, nor would I care to assume that responsibility. You people do a great job. And I'm just going to leave it up to you.
Well, we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, I started to work, as you indicated, with the Mount Hood Cable Legatory Commission back in 1996. And there's been so much happen during that period. We thought it would be a good opportunity for us to get together with council members who may or may not be all that familiar with what goes on at the commission and kind of bring you up to date. With me tonight are people who know what goes on every day. And directly to my left is Julie Melcheck. She's the program manager for the commission. And to her left is Rebecca Gibbons. She's the program coordinator. I have worked with these two capable, fine ladies for some time and know the quality of work that they put together. We're here tonight to give a presentation on a decade of community technology investments and benefits that have been made possible by the MHCRC's work on franchise agreements. That's really what it's all about. I want to thank the council for being a partner with the other jurisdictions in providing these benefits to the community. The renewal of the Comcast franchise presented an opportunity in an opportune time for all partners to look back and recognize the achievements of MHCRC under the expired franchise. I'm confident that after you see the presentation tonight, you'll feel as I do that the benefits of being part of this group would be financially and managerially difficult to replace. It's a unique group made up, and you'll find, you'll see who all it's made up of, but, you know, basically Multnomah County and all the jurisdictions in the county. And it's a big job. Thank you for the opportunity. Julie?
Thanks, Commissioner Gohin. I just want to add that, you know, as you listen to this presentation, is this on? Yes. All right. As you listen to this presentation, for you all to know that Rich has been a very big part of making these public benefits work for your community here in Fairview. So we are thankful every day that Rich serves on our commission and brings a wealth of experience and knowledge and humor at times to our commission. So what we're going to do today is we have a presentation that really I'm just the narrator for. So I would like to encourage you to watch your screen, and the viewers at home, that's pretty much what they're going to see as well. Can everyone see the screen well, the colors and the, or do you need the lights dimmed more?
It's fine, we're fine.
Are you good?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're here tonight to present the concrete investments and impacts in your community of the cable franchise public benefits over the last decade. The franchise resources are pushed deep into the community. Schools, libraries, nonprofits, and local governments and all their constituents have relied on franchise resources to support their various missions and services. The collective impact of these benefits is broad and represents a significant local investment over the past 10 years throughout Multnomah County. I'd like to show you what that investment has meant here. Let's start with franchise fees. Two cable companies currently operate in Fairview. Comcast provides service countywide and has been the dominant provider for many years. For the past four years, Frontier has also provided service in Fairview, Troutdale, Gresham, Enwood Village, and a smaller third provider serves unincorporated county, kind of in the Corbett area. The cable companies pay 5% of gross revenues in franchise fees for private use of the public right-of-way. Over the past decade, the franchise agreements have generated about $54 million in franchise fees for the six jurisdictions. The MHCRC collects the franchise fees for Fairview and the other jurisdictions in East Multnomah County and allocates them in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement. The MHCRC distributes 60% to Metro East Community Media, retains a portion for the approved MHCRC budget, and provides the balance to each jurisdiction for your general fund. As you can see collectively, Fairview and the other East County jurisdictions support about 35% of the MHCRC operations budget. Fairview contributes about $10,000 annually. The general fund revenue from franchise fees has increased each year totaling about $2.9 million to Fairview and the other cities over the past 10 years. Annually, Fairview receives about $33,000 for its general fund. Next, we'll talk about the PEG Capital Fund. In addition to the franchise fee, the companies pay 3% of their gross revenues to a capital fund for public education and government use of the cable system. These funds are restricted for certain purposes, both in the franchise and under federal law. The capital fund represents an investment throughout the county of about $36 million over the past decade. The fund has provided capital resources in three areas: community media, the Community Access Capital Grant Program, and the Institutional Network, or INET. I'll start with community media. Multnomah County is fortunate to have two vibrant community media centers. Portland Community Media focuses its services in Portland, and Metro East Community Media is the primary community media center for Fairview and its community. So we're highlighting Metro East in this presentation tonight. As you know, Metro East produces local programming and provides media training, along with cable casting and producing the City of Fairview council meetings and many other meetings. Over the past 10 years, the MHCRC and its jurisdictions have invested $5.9 million in operational funding and $4.9 million in capital funds for Metro East. A primary benefit of that investment is local video programs produced for and by the community. Just this past year alone, Metro East supported production of over 3,800 new local television programs. This purely local aspect is what makes this public benefit unique. These shows are as diverse as the residents who produce them. Many go to underlying issues in our communities such as civic dialogue and engagement, community building, workforce development, equity, and cultural diversity. Also, Metro East partnerships with local schools and organizations push the media tools and resources deep into the community. We have a couple of examples here. Metro East has a vibrant youth media program which partners with schools throughout East Multnomah County. For example, Reynolds High School is a local partner. Metro East works closely with teachers to provide media literacy and technology classes, and students earn required credits for their work. The Multnomah Bar Foundation Civic Education Fund partners with Metro East to produce a series focusing on democracy. The project brings together members of the legal community, judicial branch, local nonprofits, and community members. For over 10 years, countless community organizations have used Metro East's community hotline to share information about their organizations, events, and issues. This weekly showcase is available at no charge and is a valuable resource for local nonprofits, schools, and government agencies. I call these partnerships going from good to great. Good that Metro East has these resources, and great that the resources are repurposed in the community and help nonprofits get literate in the digital age. Now for the Community Access Capital Grants. The Community Access Capital Grants provide funding directly to nonprofits, educators, and local governments so they can use cable system technology to address their constituency's needs. This program has assisted 50 local organizations and agencies and funded over 115 projects countywide. I'll hit some highlights about the grants to give you a feel for the depth and breadth of this grant program. Over $12 million in grant funds have been invested throughout the county over the past decade. Grantees have added over $26 million in matching fund resources to these projects. Most grant funds have gone to educational institutions and nonprofit groups, and about 10% to local government agencies. Grantees identify the public benefit for their project under four categories funded by the program. About 50% of the grants given were for improving service delivery, another third for reducing disparities to underserved communities, and the remaining to increasing community involvement and reducing costs of public services. Grant projects must also use the access channels or the INET in some way. Of the 115 grant projects, a little over half used video technology for programming on the access channels, about a third used the INET, and about 14% used both the INET and the Community Access channels. Grantees also identify the constituency benefiting from the grant project. As you can see, 50% of the grants have helped organizations address underserved and marginalized communities in a variety of ways. These diverse populations are included on the screen. I'd like to highlight a couple of our many grants. The MHCRC funded several projects at high schools with high free and reduced lunch populations and students of color, including high schools in most districts within Multnomah County. As you can see, in all but one high school, more than 50% of the students are on free and reduced lunch programs. In addition, students of color make up 50% of the student bodies at seven of the nine high schools funded. Another high-impact grant was in support of the Gateway Domestic Violence Service Center in mid-Multnomah County. Grant funds enabled the center to acquire a video system that allows victims of domestic violence to apply for restraining orders at the center instead of at the courthouse in downtown Portland. This system has created a safe and more accessible way to use this critical legal process. Another example, a nonprofit example, is the Global Voices Project at the Center for Intercultural Organizing. This project provided immigrants and refugees throughout the county with media tools- This project provided immigrants and refugees throughout the county with media tools to frame and provide voice to issues impacting their communities. Excuse me. The MHCRC has also funded a number of grants that provide workforce development opportunities throughout the county. About 36% of grants awarded support these types of programs. Grants have included distance learning, online access to job applications, and training in areas such as software certification, creative industries, construction, engineering, and architecture. The next public benefit is the Institutional Network, or INET. The INET has had a profound impact in the ability of our public institutions to provide high-level services and contain costs. The INET is a public, is a, excuse me, is a separate fiber network contained within Comcast system and connects nearly 300 public sites within Multnomah County. The INET also interconnects to the City of Portland's Ernie Network, expanding its reach. This pie chart shows the nine stakeholder organizations that currently use the INET. As you can see, the schools are the largest users, reaching all seven school districts in the county. Multnomah County is the second user, including all the public libraries. This network has only been possible for the past 10 years through a successful partnership among these four groups. Comcast built, owns, and maintains the INET. Portland's Bureau of Technology Services provides network services to the public agencies. Public agencies pay monthly service fees to fund INET operations and collaborate on network planning. And the MHCRC funded the network infrastructure from the INET Capital Fund. The MHCRC also plays the critical role of facilitating this partnership and keeping it cohesive over the past 10 years and now into the future. Over $12 million in INET capital funds paid for the INET infrastructure, including fiber connections to all sites. This is a significant public investment in the network. So, why is this investment in the INET so critical? Through the MHCRC's Your Voice Assessment, we heard how the bandwidth needs have and continue to grow exponentially for our public institutions. Almost every school, library, and local government function touches the INET in some way. For instance, the INET supports phone service in every classroom for every teacher, connections for local and state court systems, public internet access at public libraries, and access to the public to local government information. The Metropolitan Education Service District tells us that the bandwidth needs for its 75 school sites doubles approximately every 18 months. Multnomah County Library reported that its public internet computers are in use over 85% of the time, serving nearly 95,000 people last year. The INET partnership has enabled a unique network that is both affordable to cash-strapped public institutions and scalable to meet ongoing and growing network needs. When the INET was lit up 10 years ago, public institutions went from using T1 lines to 100-megabit connections, 71 times more bandwidth. Now those connections are at 400 megabit with a couple at a gigabit. You don't have to be a technical expert to understand that this network has been able to meet the growing needs of our public institutions. Another bottom-line benefit is this INET partnership that we've been able to keep the network affordable. In fact, when public agencies transitioned to the INET in 2002, users reported either no cost increase for the tremendous increase in bandwidth, and many were able to reduce costs by up to 30%. Since 2002, INET rates have remained stable and predictable for our public institutions. We wanted to present some present-day context about this affordability. We asked the public agencies to estimate what they might pay commercially for network services. You can see that our schools, libraries, and local governments would be paying two to three times more for the services they currently receive through the INET partnership. Another way we've been able to keep this affordable is that public agencies share service costs at 25 sites. For example, the Multnomah County Health Clinics, nonprofit after-school programs, and a school district all share costs when located at a school. Obviously, this is much more affordable than each paying for a separate connection. The last benefit area we're discussing tonight is the MHCRC's work in consumer protection and regulation in the public interest. The MHCRC has helped residents with cable concerns, both individually and more broadly, through franchise enforcement activities. As far as individual complaints, the MHCRC has assisted in the resolution of nearly 5,000 complaints over the past 10 years. In a look, in looking at a broader view, the MHCRC addressed 75 consumer protection issues. For instance, these issues have included use of private property by the cable companies, clarity and accuracy of subscriber bills, subscriber privacy concerns, and customer service issues such as appointment windows and telephone answering. To end our presentation, we'd like to come back to franchise fees. The MHCRC has undertaken three franchise fee audits in the past 10 years. The audits recovered almost $319,000 in underpaid fees compared to a total audit expense of $30,000. So, that's our look back at our work and accomplishments in delivering the public benefits of the franchise agreements to our communities. Again, thank you for inviting us here tonight to highlight these accomplishments and these concrete investments. And Rich, Goheen, and I are happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you again for inviting us.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Owen.
I have no questions, Rich, but you say you've been doing this since 1996. I've been sitting up here since 1997, and I just absolutely admire you and your efforts and what you've done to work with the Cable Commission and coming here and filling us in. I mean, I know usually like when you bring the budget, there's a lot of material to cover, and Rich has been here every step of the way, and I think the trust that we have in Rich and not only you as employees that work for the Cable Commission, but Rich brings a lot of credibility to the table, and I just wanted to thank you for your efforts and what you do for us.
Thank you, Steve. And I just have to make the comment that, you know, you mentioned employees. I don't think of these people as employees. They're Mount Hill Cable Regulatory Commission people. I mean, that's, it's their life, it's what they're proud to do, and they do a great job.
Sure. The only challenge that I would have to them sometime when they're bored, I personally use Frontier, and you don't have to make any comments right now, but if you really want to get your blood pressure up and maybe like steam coming out of your ears sometime, try to call Frontier and resolve an issue and to see kind of how you work through the phone, you know, how they move you off from area to area. I had some issues here we won't go into, but it was absolutely comical. I mean, it got me so upset, it was almost like a challenge just to see if I could actually work through their system, but I'm sure I was the exception to the rule. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Quimby.
I just wanted to say that was an excellent presentation. I appreciate the format that you did. It was different and exciting, and I didn't fall asleep. I mean, you know, that's, I was thinking, hey, you know, if you guys ever want to get involved in a municipality, fill out an application. Great presentation. Thank you.
I give a lot of credit for this to Rebecca Givens, our program coordinator. She really did a lot with the graphical presentation here, so.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here tonight. Next on the agenda, we have council business and public rights. To begin with, we have the Heal Program Resolution 26-2013. Entertain a motion.
Was it a presentation or was it a?
It was a presentation.
All right, we'll go ahead and have a presentation. Does that sound great? Counselor Arnold.
I'm very excited to present before the council this evening a resolution to join the Heal Campaign. The campaign really is an opportunity for civic leaders like ourselves to help create a healthy community and environment for our citizens, businesses, and communities. It's really about establishing policies for our organization. As we know, that policies really is the groundwork for creating decisions, and there are four different sections that the Heal Campaign focuses on, and I thought it would only be fair to invite Carly Thorstensen. I've been working very closely with Beth Kaye from the Heal Campaign, but unfortunately she wasn't able to be here this evening, and Carly was so very gracious to offer to come tonight and help answer any questions that our organization might have about joining the Heal Campaign. So, Carly, if you wouldn't mind.
Hello, my name is Priscilla Costlers. My name is Carly Thorstensen. I work for the Oregon Public Health Institute, which is a public health nonprofit in Portland, and I have been working part-time with Beth Kaye on the Heal Cities Campaign. We've been working with other city leaders to adopt healthy eating, active living policies. And so, I've got some information. As you can see, we have a Heal Cities policy menu, which offers over 50 different policy options in land use and transportation, access to healthy foods, shared use, and work site wellness. So, those are four main areas. And it's just a low-cost policy options that you can adopt to fit your city, what your city needs, and places you in good position to get other future funding.
Grant funding.
Yeah, grants. And yeah, so if anybody has any questions. I did have, I just got a picture from Fairview that.
It's also important to note that our city would come in, there are four different levels that our city could come in and out, and ours would be at an active city, which is a city that already has at least one Heal policy on their books, and I think we actually probably have a couple more. They're a little bit iffy, but I sat with Beth and I sat with Alan, and we went through all of our policies, and we're looking at, you know, technically what we already have in place, and it's really exciting. I think, you know, our slogan here at the city is a city, you know, we have vision. And I think that the folks that precessed me really thought about how our city should look, and we see sidewalks, we have lights, we have trees, it is relatively accessible. We found a couple areas that, you know, as many of us already know, that we have some accessibility issues, and I think that this kind of highlights and displays some of those issues that we already have. But the Heal Campaign kind of, it is really about identifying things like this and then creating policy. What kind of policies can we make now so that in the future, when we have revenues, how can we fix things like this?
And we have various staff members that have expertise in lots of different areas that can provide assistance to you and answer questions and help you along the way.
Right. Okay, anybody entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Resolution 26-2013.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, Counselor Quimby moved, and Counselor Prom seconded. Any discussion or comments from the council? Counselor Owen.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to turn that on. It was a mistake.
Counselor Quimby.
I've had a chance to review, I think, the majority, if not all, of the handouts that you brought tonight were in our packets, and I was privy to a demonstration, what am I trying to say, presentation previously for council and mayors of three cities out here. Phenomenal package here. There's so many areas that it can affect eating, living, I mean, it's just, just great. I'm super pleased with what this program is about, and I am just absolutely thrilled that we have an opportunity to get involved in this. It's just, the scope of coverage from everything has been very well thought out, it's very comprehensive, and I appreciate that this is something that's available to us, and I'm real excited to get it implemented and see what it does for us and how we can help our citizens.
Great, that's great. I actually wanted to show you. We made you a logo too.
Oh, nice.
I just let you logo it.
Very good.
And it looks like there's only a couple of cities so far, Twolton?
Twolton and Wilsonville have been the first two to sign up, and we have a few more in line, so.
And Lead of Oregon Cities, I guess, is getting on board with this, and so we're out front as leaders in this, and I think that's pretty neat for Fairview too.
Yeah, you're leading the way.
Any other discussion or comments?
I just have a quick question. In looking at all of your brochures and things, I believe you said that there were like 50 choices of different, different things?
Yes, there's in the policy menu, which I think is one of your handouts, there's different policy options.
I guess my question is going to be, are we required to have a specific amount or just pick and choose or?
So, as Counselor Arnold was saying before, you already have some that qualify, and then if you want to choose more, or we can work with you to tailor any of, you know, any of the options to be a better fit. It's really what works for you.
So, we don't have to say you have to have 10 or?
No.
No. And just on a side note, Beth and Alan and I kind of reviewed all the different policies, and we thought, we picked a couple that we're really close on already, and thought these might be easy first steps, low costs to kind of continue moving city and the city into the fabulous category.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. Motion is approved for Resolution 26-2013. Thank you, Carly, for coming. The next item we have is Pretreatment Program Ordinance 4-213, second reading. City Recorder, could you please read the ordinance by title for second reading?
An Ordinance of the Fairview City Council Amending Chapter 13.25 Industrial Wastewater Pretreatment Program of the Fairview Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there any additional information from the staff?
No, there is not.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any additional information that the council would like to ask of staff or provide?
No.
No? All right. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, and just to say hello to the mayor, is there anyone out there that would like to speak about anything? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other discussion from the council?
Motion to approve Ordinance 4-2013.
Second.
Counselor Owen moved, and I didn't hear her seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Prom seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay. I believe that's it with that.
I'll call for the vote.
Aye. Why did I forget that vote? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passed unanimously.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second. We are now adjourned.
We didn't have a vote.
Oh, my God.
Aye.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.